I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Just a reminder, if you have a cell phone, please turn it off. And our first order of business will be to swear in our new council member, Kevin Stroud.
What?
Okay. And for the city of Brush and the city of Colorado, please raise your right hand. I, Kevin Stroud.
I, Kevin Stroud.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
The laws of the United States and the state of Colorado.
The laws of the United States and Colorado.
The municipal code.
The municipal code.
And the ordinances of the city of Brush.
And the ordinances of the city of Brush.
And that I will faithfully perform all of the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform all the duties.
Pertaining to the office of Councilor Ward Two.
Pertaining to the office of Councilor Ward Two.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Okay. Welcome aboard, Kevin. Uh, let's go ahead and have a roll call, please.
Mayor Bing.
Here.
Counselor Gatto.
Here.
Counselor Loa. Counselor Lunsrum. Counselor Scullysey.
Here.
Counselor Sherman.
Here.
Counselor Bradlin.
Here.
Counselor Stroud.
Here.
Okay, moving on to number four, approval of minutes. Uh, we've all had a chance to check the regular meeting minutes for February tenth. Are there any additions or corrections to the minute?
I do have one correction.
Okay.
Where, um, in the minutes, we were acknowledging the team who put the video together for the HGTV hometown takeover. It says that the gift cards came only from the Chamber of Commerce and wanted to point out that the city was also in on those gift cards as well. They came from both the city and the Chamber.
Okay. Any other corrections? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve. Okay, second?
Second.
And I, we're gonna just do this a little bit. We always do the "I". We're just gonna go ahead and do a roll call vote, 'cause I think it's smoother. So, we have a motion, we have a second, we'll do a roll call vote on the minutes.
Counselor Sherman.
Yes.
Mayor Bing.
Yes.
Counselor Bradlin.
Yes.
Counselor Stroud.
Yes.
Counselor Scullysey.
Yes.
Counselor Gatto.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to number five, visitors and delegations. We have Stephanie Anzia going to give us a presentation providing brief history of Brush's Quiet Zone project and outlining the steps in moving forward with the Quiet Zone project on Hospital Road Crossing. Welcome, Stephanie.
Thank you. My name is Stephanie Anzia. I'm with Fellowsbury Call Millard. We are a private engineering consulting firm and we're, um, in Sentinel, Colorado, a little about me. I was gonna run you through a little bit of history of the Quiet Zone rule, just to give you a little background and then take you through the actual Hospital Road Crossing and keep it to fifteen minutes, okay? Yeah, an actual Quiet Zone, you have one out here. An actual Quiet Zone is just a railroad crossing or a road crossings where the locomotive horn no longer needs to be sounded because there have been safety upgrades implemented at the crossing or road crossings. The rule went into effect actually in two thousand and five and preceding that, the whole reason it came into effect is because nationwide there were a lot of complaints about inconsistency in horn sounding from locomotives. And so what they did was they tested over the course of ten years, the environmental investigation, tested a bunch of treatments at crossings and along with implementing a very regular horn sound, which you hear now, which is two longs, a short long, as they go through every single crossing, they also implemented exceptions which would allow communities to establish Quiet Zones if they can increase the safety of individual crossings. It's a little bit of the background. There are two ways to do this. Uh, one of them is called a public authority notification and that's, I believe, how you accomplish your first Quiet Zone, which is there are some pre-approved treatments. Uh, they've already been through the FRA analysis. They have been, um, okayed by both the FRA and USDOT, SDE, all of those federal, uh, federal agencies. And so, once those are implemented, all you have to do is send out notifications that you intend to create a Quiet Zone and then after construction, that you are asking them to actually establish a Quiet Zone, but there's no application. Those are already pre-approved. The second is a public authority application. And those are Quiet Zone treatments that don't necessarily meet the rule for, uh, the pre-approved conditions. And those can be engineered solutions and non-engineered solutions. Uh, in Colorado, because we're younger than the coasts, particularly East Coast, all of our Quiet Zones are new and we don't have a lot of Quiet Zones that, um, can be done by an application in an easy way, let's say it that way. Uh, it's very difficult and time-consuming and there aren't any that I'm aware of, with the exception of one, that was a modified supplementary safety measure, which is in Nevada, but there are no others that were done that way in Colorado. So, the rules are, it has to be a minimum length of a half a mile long of railroad, so a quarter mile on either side. And the reason for that is because trains approaching a crossing begin to sound the horn a quarter mile in advance. And so if there's two crossings within a quarter mile of each other and only one's a Quiet Zone, by default, they violate that Quiet Zone every time you're on approach to the one that's too close. And so they set that as the, as the main rule. If they're within a quarter mile, they have to be done. If there's crossings within a quarter mile, they have to be in together. Every crossing that's gonna be in a Quiet Zone has to have a basic type of treatment, active warning devices. And so they have to have approach railroad gate arms, flashing lights, a bell or bells if there's gonna be pedestrian or non-motorized activity at the crossing. Constant warning time circuitry and, just to tell you what that is, a little bit of a comparison. Years ago and up until, uh, probably early two thousands, they had motion detection. So, you go to a grocery store, you step on the pad and the door opens. The same way for trains. It was so far out and it didn't matter how fast the train was going, once it hit that point, the gates would start to come down. But when you had trains going really fast, it wasn't enough time. And when they were going too slow, the gates would come down, motors would sit there and wait, wait, look, and there's no train. So, constant warning time circuitry measures both distance and speed of any approaching train and consistently gives motors twenty seconds of warning. So, twenty seconds prior to whatever speed train, no matter how far out it is, twenty seconds prior to entering the crossing, the gates start coming down, the flashers go off, the bells go off. So, it's just consistent and it's really for motors, so that people don't get impatient and try to drive around gates, that kind of thing. Power out indicators, and that's basically the big X that you see, uh, that's on the side of the signal bungle that tells approaching locomotive engineers if the power is on or off. If the power is off and the active warning is not working, by default, they will always sound the horn even in a Quiet Zone. And then advanced warning signs, you have one out there at your Quiet Zone now. The no-train horn sign gets added to the round railroad sign in every direction on every approach to a particular crossing. So, there are a couple of supplementary safety measures and these are those pre-approved measures that I mentioned. These two, permanent closure, uh, if it's permanently closed or the crossing is permanently closed, there's no ch- there's no chance that a car and a train are gonna have a conflict and so by default, they don't sound the horn. Uh, temporary closures, these really, um, we've only seen these at military bases because they close them down at ten o'clock and open them up at six. And you have to have an MP or somebody there opening up at six. But if nobody's there, somebody's running late, the gate's not open, the road's not open, you can't get up at seven, so. We don't see a lot of those. Uh, the one-way conversion of a street, uh, basically all you're doing is forcing traffic to only approach the crossing from one direction and putting two gates to block the access to that crossing, um, from that one direction. Four quadrant gates, uh, four quadrant gates have approach and exit gates. So, you have them on the entering side and the exit side of a crossing. So essentially, you're isolating that crossing from both sides in both directions whenever a train's gonna be approaching the crossing. This is, by the way, the most expensive option, obviously, 'cause it has four, uh, four O gates that need to be installed. It is what they call the gold plate. Um, someone who really wants to get into a crossing when all four gates are down, they're gonna have to go through a lot of work to do it. Um, so it really is a good, um, dissator of folks trying to get into a crossing when a train's coming. This is the most popular version that we have and this is raised medians with channelizing devices with approach gates. And you see a lot of these, uh, and the main reason is because it's, it's the most, um, standardized for both communities in the railroad and the road, typically does install approach gates with flashers, bells, crossbooks, and the constant warning time circuitry. And a lot of road authorities have standards for six-inch curved medians down the center of the road. So, it's nothing unfamiliar. And so, putting these in in the right combination and with a median at the right length renders the crossing a Quiet Zone. It just, it became very easy for folks to do this. There was no new training, no new maintenance, no new standards. And so these are, the majority of the Quiet Zones in Colorado have this kind of treatment and yours out there has this kind of treatment. The channelizing devices are on the right and up on the top, it's kind of a little bit smaller, but that's the detail. And those are for roads where, the one on the right we did, it's right downtown Denver. The overpass is Arary Parkway. So, this road is literally under Arary Parkway and it's right next to student housing for Metro State University, who were complaining about a lot of trains. So, we couldn't widen the road and we ran into the piers. So, we put in these channelizing devices and they're literally tacked down on the yellow, double yellow line. And then those panels are twelve inches wide and thirty-six inches tall. And they're just hazard panels that just direct people to stay to the right of the hazard panels. The nice thing about these is that they're retro reflective, so at night, they really kinda show up. And near a college campus, I think it was a, a good choice.
On those ones, they still have to be sixty feet long, though?
Yes. And so we actually had to move, you see the crosswalk right there, we actually, it was closer. We had to move that away, 'cause we didn't want kids in the middle of that, sixty feet panels. Uh, so we moved that back to the sixty-foot mark. Um, and then the wayside horns, we have two wayside horns in Colorado and all these are, they are, they look like megaphones and you can see it on the, the pole, uh, between the sign and the crosswalk. That, that pole has two, um, megaphones or wayside horns. They, they, uh, mount them on the pole and it's a one-for-one replacement for the locomotive horn. Locomotive horn is on the top of the train though, so that's about twenty-three feet in the air. And they start sounding a quarter mile in advance and so that noise cloud, if you will, is huge. It just impacts everything. These guys are mounted about thirteen feet in the air and the decibel level is down to ninety-two decibels, whereas the locomotive horn is ninety-six to one-hundred-and-ten. So, it's just quieter, so we call the noise that this makes, we call it a noise peanut because it looks like a little peanut-shaped cloud that's right at the crossing and it's really directed just at vehicles that are approaching the crossing. And so, uh, we have two of them in Colorado. I'm not a huge fan. And the reason is because they, we've had issues with both of them. They just don't work quite right. And I think it's a circuitry issue between the technology of the wayside horn from when they were developed and the fact that the railroad circuitry has come so far forward and they're just not talking to each other quite right, so. Um, until they get that worked out, I'm, I'm not really recommending those. Um, okay, so, just moving a little bit into the, the process now. This is a BNSF railway track out here and both BNSF and UP minimize their staff over the last couple of years and so now they have consultants that are working for them to do some of the work. And so, they now require a preliminary engineering agreement and that basically gives them a way to get paid and to pay their consultant, um, for being involved in the project. And so, the very first step is getting involved between the road authority, which would be the city of Brush, and we have to have a given preliminary engineering agreement together. And then after that, we do a field diagnostic review. We stand out there with the city, the railroad, our Public Utilities Commission, who has regulatory authority over all public crossings in the state and Federal Railroad Administration. We now have somebody here locally, he lives down in Monument, so we don't have to fly anybody in from Kansas City anymore, which is kinda nice. Um, stand out there and we talk about what, what the crossing has to do, what it needs to be Quiet Zone compliant. Uh, and in the end, the important thing to note is that the decision is the city's. The FRA doesn't decide, the PC doesn't decide, the railroad doesn't decide. Your, the road authority is your decision, what you want to implement at this crossing. We discuss traffic counts, train counts, and then any collisions or issues, safety issues, anything you guys are concerned about. And we try to make sure that we address that, knowing that we're looking at turning off the locomotive horn.
On the train counts, will they bring that data that day?
Yes.
Or give it to us prior?
Yes. And we're also having them bring their, uh, signal folks, so they can open up their railroad signal bungle and tell us, confirm the circuitry. Right now, the FRA inventory report for Hospital Road says it has constant warning time circuitry, but we've come across projects where we've gone out there, they've opened the bungalow and it's a different kind of circuitry. So, now, we're requiring them to bring those folks out, so we can figure everything out when we're out there.
On the train counts, do they have the ability to give us numbers of how long a cross has blocked?
Uh, that's a good question. Um, I, you know, I think they have some averages, but I don't think they have consistently accurate numbers. I don't know what that is, but knowing that you have several tracks out here, you have a main, you have some yard tracks. I don't know if they do a lot of switching, moving back and forth.
Yeah, they do.
Over, yeah, and, and a lot of times, that is just so difficult to predict. It's certainly a question that's worth asking and it's worth asking when we have all of those other agencies present. It's definitely worth asking, so that we have that information about us.
So, a train that's just sitting there is still gonna be just one train count, regardless of how long it's been there for?
Yeah, they, the way they're supposed to report them on the FRA inventory report is daytime, which is six AM to six PM, nighttime, which is six PM to six AM, and switching. And switching means moving back and forth through the crossing one at a time. And so, this one right now does not list any switching. It lists sixteen and sixteen, day and night, for thirty-two toll, but it does list any switching.
So, the technology inside the arms, it can't tell you how many times it goes up and down and how long it stays down?
No, the, that's the one issue with the constant warning time circuitry is, once that, w- once it's in there, unless those gate arms are, um, as long as the train's in the crossing, the gate arms have to stay down. If that train moves to a certain distance and it's still within that trigger area, um, sometimes they will, they will design them so that the gates timeout and just go up if the train sits for so long at such and such a distance away from the crossing. Sometimes they don't design that into it. So, if that, if you know that you have this issue with Hospital Road, we will want to talk about this.
That might, that might help us, because there are times that they move out of the way for a long enough period of time, you could alleviate some of the traffic that was.
Do the gates go up to you?
I, I haven't seen them.
It's like they're just down.
Yeah. Well, they're down all the time, 'cause there's a train there.
And so we, we'll wanna talk about all this when we have the PCs years there, the FRAs years there. We wanna talk about this with all that.
Can we have that discussion also with them about the blocking of the?
Absolutely.
Because, one of the things, I've filmed this two or three times now myself, is, is I think one of the biggest concerns is I have seen eighteen wheelers waiting at that train crossing, not knowing that they might be there for hours. I've gotten out of my car and had to direct them backwards onto a state highway in order to get them moving. Okay, 'cause there's no other, there's no way for them to turn around. You have to actually back out onto the state highway. So, I would love to have that conversation with the safety impacts of our residents and anybody taking that state highway under those conditions.
Absolutely. And they don't block your current Quiet Zone in Hospital Road at the same time, do they?
Sometimes, I, I think, I've heard that they do. I've heard there's times when both of them are, are blocked.
That's another really good conversation to have, 'cause, you know, it gets down to like emergency vehicles and.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, that's.
The, the coal trains are over seven thousand feet.
They are.
And those crossings are a mile apart.
That's right.
Yep. And that's the biggest issue now, is if they're not just moving all the way through, particularly the really long ones, and they're blocking two crossings, then what are the next flanking crossings that you have for emergency vehicles? And those.
Another mile down the road.
Yeah, and those kinds of, so I mean, that's the kind of thing that has to be brought up the chain a little bit, I think. I think the FRA needs to be aware, the PC needs to be aware of.
We have attempted to take that up.
Oh, yeah, okay. So, I, I mean, I think it's worth talking about again, when we have them all on site.
Okay.
Bring up those issues and let's talk about that and talk to BNSF about what, can they give us any kind of regularity as far as their train count, the usage, the switching, the stopping, you know, if they can help us out, understanding some of that.
Yeah, I think from the community standpoint, there's, there's a lot of people that would like to see a Quiet Zone issue. But the bigger issue would be if they could put a siding on the other side of Brush or east of Brush to get some of that switching out of the way. It would, that would satisfy so many people in town that are having a way right now.
Yeah, definitely worth talking about, I think. Good, thank you for bringing that up. That was something I was not aware of. Okay, so looking at Hospital Road, um, I did look at the FRA inventory report and so Hospital Road does have approach gates, flashers, crossbooks, constant warning time circuitry, and it has one bell. The three tracks are listed as a main and two yard tracks. Maximum speed is seventy-nine miles per hour, which usually is my indicator that Amtrak uses. Okay. Do you have one or two Amtraks that kind of do?
I think just one.
One in each direction.
Yeah.
One in each direction, okay. And then thirty-three parallel days, sixteen daytime, sixteen nighttime, didn't list any switching. And listed the concrete, the crossing material is concrete. Are all three of them concrete out there? Okay, I think they are.
I had a question about the bells. Are, is there the, the ringing bells? That was one of the concerns that we had is, um, when the crossing is blocked, it's right there next to the senior living facility and that ringing bell just goes on forever. Are there different volumes of the bells, decibel levels or anything like that, or is that one standard bell that?
It's one standard and unfortunately, when the act, when any of the active crossing, um, infrastructure is on, it's just on. And it doesn't turn off, even in Quiet Zones, they don't turn the bells off. Those are considered, and the reason is because the locomotive horn is considered the last-dish sound warning for cars. The bells are aimed at non-motorized users, so they just don't turn off. But that, we might be able to resolve that a little bit if we can talk to them about the whole blocking issue and if a train's.
Yeah, because the bells are always going because the train is always blocking. That, that would.
And if a train is sitting there, clearly no one can move over the crossing if it's blocking, you know.
The bells will need to be ringing.
Yeah, could they timeout and then let the gates go up and then as soon as the train starts moving, they can't have the gates connect up? I mean, maybe could they design it like that? That would be something we could talk around. So, the first option would be to do similar to what you have at your existing Quiet Zone, which would be a sixty-foot either median or channelizing device. And the only issue with this one is that railway street is within that sixty feet. You can't have any public access, public roads. Um, you can have private driveways and you can have residential drives that serve no more than four residential units within that sixty feet, but you can't have anything public. And so, that roadway would have to be realigned and I just kinda set it in there the way it looks now. I just moved it so that, uh, they measure it to the point of tangency where the curve begins for the road. That's the point, it has to be sixty feet away.
Oh.
And so that's why it's drawn out west. Um, and the other side doesn't have any public access or roadway within sixty feet, so there would be no modifications on that side. The, the upside to this particular option is that all of the railroad infrastructure is there. You wouldn't have to ask the railroad for any new infrastructure. They wouldn't be, um, giving you any estimates or coming up with any schematic diagrams or none of that. Uh, this would all be contractor roadway work, uh, you, 'cause I know there's a hundred and twenty out there that would be the last dissemery issue for us. But this would all be s- uh, under your control, let's put it that way. Uh, the city could, um, we could design it, we could have a contractor on board to construct it and then you send your notice of intent to create a Quiet Zone and as soon as it's done with construction, you send your NOE and you have your Quiet Zone. So, this one kinda leaves the railroad out of it. They don't, they'll still be involved in, uh, the field diagnostic reviews. They still get copied on the PC application and can provide comments if you like. They can provide comments on the notice of intent to create a Quiet Zone. But we've kinda been through quite a few PC hearings lately with the BNSF opposing things and giving expert witness testimony about, this is what the rule says. We, doesn't really matter if you like it or not, this is what the rule says. And so, they are starting to learn that they really should not be wasting the PC's time opposing some things. And so, we would certainly invite them to be a part of all of this, but we wouldn't let them oppose it necessarily. So, this is one option and of course, the other option is the four quadrant gates. You can kinda see them, I drew in the existing gates in dark gray, but then the newer exit gates are in red. We would ask for just installation of the exit gates because we have approach gates, constant warning. We have everything else we need. Uh, sometimes the railroad will, um, say that they need to replace everything. In more recent years, they have come away from that a little bit and been more willing to just install the equipment that we actually need and not replace everything, which brings the cost way down. So, this, uh, is the exact opposite of the one you just saw in that there's almost no roadway contractor work. It's all roadway work. The only thing that, uh, you would have to do would be a little bit of siding and striping to put up the no-train horn sign and to do the striping on the edges. So, those are the two supplementary safety measure pre-approved options. Both of those get you a permanent Quiet Zone. Um, so this is just a breakdown. I don't have to take a lot of time to go through all of this, but it's sort of what we all just talked about. Um, the differences between four quadrant gates being mostly roadway work and gates with medians or channelizing being mo- mostly roadway contractor work. The one thing I did wanna note to you is as far as funding, I don't know if you like to go after any kind of federal funding and there wasn't any on the FRA website when I checked it a couple days ago, but I just got a notification that USDOT is now quitting out several billion and those have been pursued for Quiet Zone improvements. The, the issue with that, of course, is if it's federal, then you have to go through all, you have to check all the boxes. You have to go through a catalog exclusion, look at all your drainage and, you know, do all of that. But it's, it's nice to have the federal money if, if it's something that you want received. So, just know, there is money available out there if you would want to go through a grant, uh, funding application.
Our finance officer loves federal money and the paperwork.
I, I, that's why I brought my phone up here, 'cause I thought you.
Well, and, and we have waited, uh, probably a couple of years, hoping that something would move forward to get grant funding for projects like this, so. We would love that.
This one's USDOT funding, it's the build funding and it just came out, application's due May eighteenth. I didn't get to read the whole article, I'll read it for now. Um, but it would certainly be an option for you because this would be considered a safety. They, they talk about quality of life improvements, which is what this is, safety improvements, uh, local and they do like to give a certain percentage of the funding to more rural communities, so it could certainly be worth it.
Okay.
The schedule, I apologize how small this is, but, um, generally, the, you end up with kinda the same thing at about the same time. The only thing that could possibly throw off, which I don't think is an issue anymore, I'm not gonna overuse it, um, is if the P, if the railroad decides to oppose the PC application. But because we went through a long hearing process for another community and they ended up, uh, the judgment was in favor of the community and not the railroad, I kinda think they, they're getting a message that they can't oppose these things. If their boss at the FRA says it's okay, it's okay. So, I think they're kinda getting that message. So, I don't think that this would push off into twenty-twenty-two. Uh, I do think, usually railroads say cradle to grave, eighteen months. You know, the diagnostic, all the way through to, uh, equipment installed, uh, tested, turned over to operation. They usually say eighteen months.
Eighteen months, okay.
And it was, it was slowing down here for a while as they were making the transition from in-house to out-house folks. But now with these out-house folks and the PCs kinda slapping on a little bit, they're starting to get the pace again. So, this, your time is up. Sorry, I went over fifteen minutes, but that was.
No, no, thank you. We really appreciate you coming down here.
Do you have any, any questions for me? Anything you'd like to ask?
Council questions?
So, do we have a date, um, there's a meeting with all the entities?
So, the first thing we have to do is that application, was it called a PE?
The PEA agreement, right.
Yeah, the P agreement and we'll probably start that in the next few weeks. And then, I don't know the timeline from once those are submitted, how long it takes that to occur, but we'll rely on Stephanie to just keep paddle to the metal and get to the decision point and then just keep moving along.
So, is the cradle, when that application gets sent in, that's, when we talk about eighteen months, is that the cradle?
No, it's usually the, the date of the digost.
Date of the digost, okay.
'Cause then we also have the PC and the FRA are involved now.
Yeah.
And so they know.
Okay.
And start and they are able to help us move things along.
Okay.
It's usually the digost.
Okay.
So, if we were determined to wanna go after this federal grant, do we have to have the approval of the Quiet Zone priority to go after federal ones?
No.
So, do we still have the money or what?
That's a good question. Okay. Anything else? Stephanie, thank you very much for coming in.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
Okay, moving on to citizen comment, is there anyone that would like to publicly comment tonight? Okay, moving on to management, six A, approval of library board members for two thousand and twenty.
Laura McConnell with the Eastmore County Library, who was here at last regular meeting on February tenth. She reported, um, the, the board. She reported, um, the, the board of directors and members for twenty twenty, and I'll refer to who they are. Greg Crowe, president, Gail Lindell, vice president, Lenore Wynn, secretary, Carla Kruger, uh, treasurer. Then we have Joy Freehoff, Larry Gio, and Tom Hoffman. She had also asked council for the approval on, uh, or at the February tenth meeting, but it wasn't listed on the agenda, so we needed to push it to tonight. She's asking for council approval tonight for the board of directors and members for twenty twenty.
Okay.
As we approve the library board members for twenty twenty?
Okay, we have both. Okay, motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion to approve and a second for the discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Scalisi?
Yes.
Counselor Gatto?
Yes.
Counselor Stroud?
Yes.
Mayor Bane?
Yes.
Counselor Sherman?
Yes.
Counselor Stradlin?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to five B. Did, did we cover historic preservation board as a separate?
That's a separate.
Okay. Okay, okay. Go ahead.
The historic preservation board has voted to add Tom Hoffman as an alternate member, and they are asking council to approve the addition of Tom.
Okay, I look for a motion. Okay, we have a motion to approve the alternate member, do we have a second?
A second?
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Gatto?
Yes.
Counselor Stradlin?
Yes.
Mayor Bane?
Yes.
Counselor Stroud?
Yes.
Counselor Sherman?
Yes.
Counselor Scalisi?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to five C, approval of bid for fire truck purchase, or fire chief Ted Anderson.
All right, so I think you guys have a, uh, letter in your packet.
Yes.
Um, I've got a couple of the, um, of the members, um, that were on this committee. Um, they went through all of, we had four manufacturers that they were looking at. Uh, we ended up picking SBI out of four columns. Um, initially, they're the highest bid, um, but after reviewing, uh, all the other manufacturers, there were exclusions in all the other manufacturers, so it was going to increase the cost to get to, um, what we were looking for. And with SBI, the number is the number. So it turned out actually that they were going to be cheaper than everybody else because they had everything that we wanted. So, uh, what we're looking for is approval from city council, um, to move forward with SBI and get it to struggle.
Okay, is that, is that a paper? Uh, letter we got is about a four hundred and thirty day lead time, so if we get going on this now, we should have it by May of next year?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
So, and they're a, a little smaller company.
Mm-hmm.
They do great work. Our current rescue is an SBI truck.
Okay.
Uh, we've used them in the past, um, so, but they, uh, they're, they're a good company and it's a good truck. So, yeah, it'll take a little bit longer, but it'll be worth it.
Well, we knew there was going to be that time.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions, council? Now, I refer a motion.
I believe we approved the bid for the SBI truck for the perm.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the bid for SBI. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Stroud?
Yes.
Counselor Gatto?
Yes.
Counselor Stradlin?
Yes.
Counselor Sherman?
Yes.
Mayor Bane?
Yes.
Counselor Scalisi?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to five D, NACOW, board municipal representative appointment. Uh, NACOW is the Northeast Colorado Association of Local Governments, and Ronnie was contacted, uh, probably about a month ago if we could get one of our council members to take on this position on the board. Uh, it's an area agency on aging with some resources from the state, and I'll just read, uh, we had a le- let's see, I think we had a letter in the packet from the council. Oh, no, we didn't have a letter. We had the website that you could go to, and I took the front page off of that. I'll go ahead and read to tell you a little bit about what they do. A lot of us know that, uh, county expresses the transportation that they, they use. But it's an area agent, agency on aging for region one, which is our area, uh, that provides leadership in assessing strength and needs of older adults in the region. We facilitate strategic planning and implementation, fund and provide services to benefit older adults over sixty years of age and their caregivers, regardless of age. We administer funds designated from the Older Americans Act and Nutrition Services Incentive Program. I'm not sure if that includes meals on wheels. Uh, does anyone know if that's part of, okay. But, uh, they, they try to provide a minimum of one-third of dietary reference intakes for older adults. Uh, it also helps older adults remain independent and in their communities to live better and healthier as they age in place. We also provide assist, provide assistance to Medicare beneficiaries and residents of any age who live in long-term care facilities. In addition, we provide information, referral, and options counseling to anyone eighteen or older with a disability, as well as to older adults through the Aging and Disability Resource for Colorado Program. We strive to provide a quality way of life that is dignified for the clients who utilize our services. We provide and implement these services for those who are in the greatest economic and social need, using a very dedicated staff and over a hundred and fifty volunteers. So I guess at this time I would ask if there's a council member that would like to take on this board position. Uh, and I think it's, it's an important one because we have a lot of older people in our community, and, and if we have someone from council on this board that can give us some of the information about what the needs are, what's going on, I think we could better serve residents, so.
You're looking at me like I'm an older person.
Well, I, I'm, yeah, yeah, you're just barely older than me.
If nobody else wants to do that or has the time, um, how often do the meetings?
I tried to call them today, um, I wasn't able to contact the director on that. I'm not sure how, what the frequency of the meetings. I don't think it's more than once a month, but I'm not sure about that yet.
Where are the meetings at?
I believe in Fort Morgan. And that they're usually about two hours long.
I can take that on Dan's call on his plate.
Dan does have a lot on his plate.
Yeah, I don't think.
And if nobody was going to Kevin, I was going to look at you. So I don't have you on the side at this point.
This might kind of be. Yeah, sure. Up what, you know.
Well.
Yeah, that's fine. It's in your passion about it anyways.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. If he'd like to. I got, I got you on finance and, okay. All right. Well, we got to make that official, so. With that, I'd like to, uh, entertain a motion for a board member position for Northeast Colorado Association of Local Governments.
I move, now, any Kevin Stroud or, uh, board position, or A, C, A, L, G.
Okay, we have a motion to, to appoint Kevin Stroud, that, do we have a second?
A second.
John seconds. Any further discussion? Miranda, roll call vote, please.
You said it right.
Yep, I guess so.
Counselor Sherman?
Yes.
Counselor Scalisi?
Yes.
Counselor Stradlin?
Yes.
Counselor Gatto?
Yes.
Mayor Bane?
Yes.
Counselor Stroud?
Yes.
Thank you for taking that on, Kevin. Okay, moving on to number six, finance.
I move we approve dispersance imperil from February eleventh to February twentieth, twenty twenty, in the amount of four hundred forty-five thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars in force sense.
Okay, we have a motion, second moves, we have a second, discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Stroud?
Yes.
Mayor Bane?
Yes.
Counselor Gatto?
Yes.
Counselor Scalisi?
Yes.
Counselor Stradlin?
Yes.
Counselor Sherman?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to number seven, staff reports, Joanne. Police chief boss.
I tried to move, just to keep it interesting. I will do my best to be short, but I have quite a few small things, so. Um, one of my officers, as I announced, two weeks ago, we haven't had any turnover. One of my officers turned in his resignation last week as Corporal Ross Blank. Um, he is leaving for two reasons primarily. Uh, one is financial, uh, and the other, his son was diagnosed with autism, and he just needs to move closer to services for his son. Uh, right now, they're traveling to Denver two to three days a week, which is just too much, so. He accepted a position actually selling Tasers and Axon cameras with Taser Axon Company. So he is relocating to North Carolina in mid-March. So his last day with us is March fifth. Uh, so we are hiring for officer position. Um, also, last, uh, two weeks ago, I brought up some soft numbers. I have better numbers now. Uh, we had twelve thousand, seven hundred, thirty calls for service in twenty nineteen, which is roughly a one thousand, uh, number increase over twenty eighteen. Uh, that breaks down to one thousand, one hundred, sixty calls for service per officer. So they're busy. Uh, there's no other way to put that. We had nine hundred, thirty-five criminal investigations coming out of that, uh, which most of those ended in arrests, not all, uh, the most. So again, very busy officers. Um, you may have seen in the newspaper, we had our impound garage burglarized last week. Uh, some criminals who we impounded their car, used a stolen car to drive through the garage door to gain access back to their car, threw items from it. Um, they left behind enough that we still have a great case against them. That's all I'm going to say right now, but we are very optimistic that we'll resolve this soon. And then I was notified roughly an hour ago, our weather sirens are on the way, and they should be installed, up and running, and completely functional within the next four weeks.
Four weeks?
Four weeks.
Wow, good, okay.
Their goal is the end of March, um, so without any delays, that's the plan.
Now, you said, were, were we up one officer or not?
We, yes, so when I came here a little over a year ago, we had one extra officer. Um, and over time, the city's basically absorbed that position. Uh, that has been partially funded through the schools with, with doing our SR, SR work there, but they've never committed to paying a certain number for the salary.
So we will be looking to hire another one?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. On what? Yeah, come right up.
I've done. We need a vote on that right now.
Well, after we got to talking about his employees, I thought it might be nice if I, um, let council know that our administration is now fully staffed, toward a hundred percent. Our latest employee, council does not know, our new HR is Kimberly Dykes. And in my front office, we now have Felicia, um, I worked as the accounts executive, divisional, and customer service.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Kim. Does the view differ from there to here? Okay, let's see, the community service director, Lance? Okay, Dale's not here. Best and brightest, Matt? City clerk, Randa? City administrator, Ronnie?
Let me down. Few items. Um, just letting council know that building permits are still going pretty strong. Randy's staying very busy, um, so people still building homes throughout the winter and a lot of home improvement projects throughout the community, um, still staying strong there. Uh, CLP, um, near as we can tell, they're, uh, a few months out yet before they open up. And the four hundred unit subdivision, it's not four hundred, it's probably going to be three sixty or something like that. But there are still a lot of good discussions and planning going on right now for the west side of the community. And so you'll be hearing word about that in a public hearing at some point. And then, uh, we did get, um, a first step in towards getting our new sidewalks along the highway, uh, on Edison Street. Uh, I went to a meeting last week for, uh, footsie dot and did a presentation. And right now, the upper frang, upper front range transportation, um, region, their executive committee is going to recommend brush for five hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars to the upper front range, um, TPR as a group. They've got to vote on it in a couple of weeks, and so if that vote goes well, then we should have, um, close to six hundred thousand dollars for our sidewalks. And then, uh, there's a TAP grant that we're also in the running for. So if we get the six hundred plus what the city's put into the budget, um, plan to put in the budget, then we should have a pretty strong chance of getting some TAP funding. But the sidewalks, driveways along the highway, roughly one point eight million dollars. So, uh, we don't have that money in our coffers to do that type of a project. So those grants, if they come through, will help us get that done. In last sixteen years here, brush, we talked about, we needed sidewalks, right, Anne?
Right.
So, uh, mid-eighty eight sidewalks all along the highway there.
And how far does that go, Matt?
Um, from roughly city hall, from roughly from city hall to Ebenezer, on both sides, so.
Okay, moving on to number eight, mayor council reports. Anyone have anything to report?
Bo. Bo has been with the city for thirty-eight years, nineteen eighty-two to the present, and tonight we're having a reception. We don't have a work session, so we'll go move into a reception after immediately following a meeting. But I just want to say, I've learned so much from, on the six years I've been on council. I feel like I should almost have part of a law degree, uh, and Bo has been.
Bo was an icon in brush history. He really is. Everybody in town knows him. You've done so much for the city of brush over the last thirty-eight years, Bo. Uh, Bo was also gracious enough to stay on for the last several months while we looked for an attorney to take his spot. Uh, so I just want to thank you for everything you've done for the community. I know your heart is still with this community even though you're residing freely, uh, and.
It is, and, and you know, I've, I've enjoyed this work with the city over the many, many years. I've seen incredible changes come to this community over that period of time. I think the first big project that I remember being involved in was when, uh, Mayor Coffin decided that we needed to redirect our economic base somewhat away from agriculture so that we weren't so, uh, dependent on the ups and downs of that, uh, very fluid business. And he worked on it, uh, prison, and that was the first big project. I don't remember the date on that, but I want to say in the, in the mid-eighties, maybe earlier than that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then one big project after another. Probably the biggest one was the, the Kojan plant that came in at four different phases. And, uh, I remember over time that, uh, when the final fourth phase was completed, it doubled the assessed valuation of this community.
That was a big change.
That was a nice kind of change to, to get into the tax coffers. Um, but anyway, it's been a wonderful experience for me. You're right, my heart is still in this community. I still have, uh, connections to the community through serving on the boards at Ebenezer and, uh, working at Community College Foundation. And, um, so I'll be down here on occasion.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm going to miss this job, and at the same time, to tell them, Randa, earlier tonight, it, it's a relief to, uh, it's a relief to, to be now fully retired.
Well, congratulations on your retirement, and thank you for everything you've done for the city over the years.
Thanks, sir. I'm going to go over the piece of city property.
I, you know what, I was going to make sure that we got that to you tonight. We got, we got something else too, though.
Oh, nice.
Can you come down here and get your picture?
Yeah.
Oh, you guys have been asking, well, I'll give you that. This is a jacket that we got, Bo, that commemorates thirty-eight years of service in the Habsburg City.
Oh, wonderful, that's great.
And it's his color, too, and likes green, too. And this is a plaque from Bo Chayton, January nineteen eightens. Nineteen eighty-two, twenty-two thousand and twenty, two thou, or, yeah, two thousand and twenty, thirty-eight years as city attorney. I don't think that the record is going to be broken. Thank you very much.
It's so wonderful. I didn't go in at the county meeting by several months.
Oh, she told me that.
Didn't you start in January?
January nineteen eighty-two, yeah.
We have the same anniversary.
Okay. Well, you kind of wouldn't. Thank you all, it's been so great time. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other council reports, Bo is also a Navy guy. Now, that's one of the reasons I liked Bo when I first met him, my dad was a career in the Navy. And when I sat in the seat where John Gatto was at, several times I heard him say this. But I want to offer you one more chance. But I want to offer you one more chance before we adjourn this meeting. You always used to, do you remember the thing you used to say when you wanted to leave a meeting?
Yeah, permission to go on shore, sir.
Permission, Grand, and say your last resort. All right. Glad motion to adjourn. All right, we are adjourned.